Invite the public to ask any questions or make any comments about items that are on the agenda. So does anybody have any questions or comments on the agenda of items right now? Great, moving on. We have minutes from previous meetings. I'll entertain a motion to approve minutes from the voting meeting of November 21st, point 23.
Seven.
Second.
Moving to second, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Not the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Executive session, I'll report that we had an executive session part of this meeting where we discussed personnel matters, real estate, potential litigation, and contract negotiations. I will now turn to Dr. Kreider. I'll turn to my left to Dr. Kreider for the superintendent's report.
Thank you Director Schreiber. We have two reports. First report, we have two students with us. We have Eva Milner and Jordan Carter with us. They are both students here at the junior senior high school, stellar students, I might add. They propose an interest in creating a black student union organization here at the junior senior high school. Approached Mrs. Foltz, who is a secondary social studies teacher, who agreed to supervise and provide support and also work very closely with Mr. McAdoo and Mr. Lockren, who are both here this evening as well. They have a brief presentation on the contents of the organization, share with us a little bit about their mission, their vision, and some of the activities that they have planned. And then we do have a motion on tonight's board agenda for the board to officially approve the organization as a recognized club and activity at the junior senior high school. Ladies, I give you the podium. They are ready, not nervous.
As Dr. Kreider said, I'm Eva, Mrs. Jordan. We're both juniors here at Carleton, and we've been talking about the Black Student Union for a while now because we are obviously two black women here at Carleton, and we really value the idea of, you know, celebrating diversity here, especially because the diversity at Carleton is so elevated and so prominent. So we created a slideshow for you guys to kind of explain what our mission was and what the reasoning is behind the formation of this club.
So first, our mission as a black student union is to offer a community a safe and positive atmosphere, to be given the opportunity for cultural improvement, while providing a place to share common intellectual ideas and issues. We strive to enrich the lives of our community and student body through acts of service and pledge to educate our community, our society, on cultural awareness in the African American community, and develop a sound community within and beyond the boundaries of our district.
So we have multiple motives and statements. So the first one is to shed light and educate about the cultural identity of the African American community here at Carleton. And how we're going to achieve this is to host organization meetings with guest speakers such as very successful black figures that we can look up to and that we can celebrate in our community, whether they came out of Carleton or they are just in our vicinity. We can also learn about and educate the community on historical figures of the month and celebrate the idea of black history months and things of that nature. And then we are also planning on using bulletin boards in the school and doing ads and things in the yearbook to educate people.
Our second why is to intertwine the majority and the minority students in our community. We plan to have monthly meetings that'll be like supervised by Mrs. Foltz or any other teacher that would like to, and hosted by co-presidents myself and Eva. And then conversations about social injustices just in our, within our community, if anybody has questions, poses issues around our own society, but there are in our community, and do volunteer work. We have, have ideas of like joining within the NHS and other clubs that do volunteer work around the school, just so we can involve more students who maybe don't have the best academic excellence that the NHS does provide.
Next, we strive to offer and connect students to opportunities for African American students. To achieve this, we want to offer field trip opportunities which would mainly focus around HBCUs. I know that black excellence in academics is something that's a little bit iffy, just considering systemic oppression and things of that nature. So the ability to educate black students and push them to achieve academic greatness is something that we find very important. We want to network with other BSUs in our area. We are in talks with the Mount Lebanon BSU, and we also know some people from the Church of St. Louis Black Student Union. And we would also like to educate on scholarships and volunteer opportunities for African Americans, like Jordan said, and focus on students' future and those who just want to be educated on black and African American culture as a whole.
We also plan to engage in cultural intellect with others in the community and celebrate successes of minority peers. Like I said, we would connect with organizations such as NHS and the Culture Club, celebrate many students either academically, socially, athletically. Eva and I are very, both academically and athletically successful within our school district, so we like to represent and be able to help others who are also maybe not as celebrated. Be inclusive to those who may not be given the opportunity to help because they do not meet the standards such as NHS or any other club that just doesn't diversify enough, and they can join, anybody can join just because they can, so.
And then we also constructed a constitution. We were in works with our sponsor, Mrs. Foltz, and Dr. Kreider. He left us constructive comments. And basically in the constitution, we have a list of all the positions and different position requirements and things they got for position jobs. And yeah, that's it. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. We'll give gifts.
Co-presidents.
Oh, co-presidents. I missed that.
I can't.
So I think one of my initial comments on the constitution that they drafted, one, I thought it was very well thought, very well articulated, very well rounded as far as a large umbrella, as far as topics that they wanted to make sure that they covered and provided supports through here at Carleton, through the, through the organization. They went through it and included a lot of facets of what is required for a club and an organization, went through and made the procedure to elect your officers, how to maintain membership, I thought also was very thoughtful, too, to make sure that students who are involved in the organization have consistent attendance within the organization, otherwise you give them the boot. So, yeah, it was very, very well done. My comments were just very few to take a look at, but they did a really nice job, so I'd encourage the board to approve the motion tonight.
Will you come back in a year or so and let us know how it's going?
Only if we provide treats.
How did this meet?
It's every meeting. Thank you, ladies. If you could, could you exit out of yours and if you could pull up Mr. Racicot's presentation? It's the other PowerPoint that's at the bottom then. I'll help him out, I'm sure. Is the navigation technology working right? Next up is Mr. Racicot, Director of Food Service, running through air marketing just to give us our annual update on the status of food services in the district.
All right. Well, it's gonna be hard to follow these ladies. All right, I'm excited to give an update here for year-to-date, all the numbers and everything I give you here from August through November. Am I going to go ahead and start? So the first thing I want to talk about is our staffing. Obviously, that's been an issue for us in the past, but over the last month or two, we have made, gained some momentum. We're now heading in the right direction. We've hired three at the high school, one person at Carnegie and two at Crafton. So currently, we're fully staffed at Carnegie. We have one opening at Crafton, but still, we're looking at six openings up here at the high school. So we're still working, but we have had a steady stream of applicants over the last month, so I'm hopeful that we can get these through.
Can I pause you quickly?
Yes.
Just for the benefit of the folks in the room.
Yes.
If they know somebody who knows somebody who might be willing to do, to help us out.
Right.
What do the positions look like and what kind of flexibility exists?
So all of the positions that are open currently are 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That's for the one at Crafton and the high school position. So they're 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, obviously Monday through Friday. It's just general food service worker, so they help set up the lines, help prep food, serve the students, clean up, and that's pretty much it, so.
If somebody can do it Tuesday and Thursday, or Monday, Wednesday and Friday, but not all five days, is that an option?
Well, we could have, if people were to sign up as substitutes, we don't have any substitutes right now, that would be helpful, and then we could call them out, you know, as they're available. Yeah, if anybody has anybody, we're always available, so. Next thing I want to go over is a little bit of the training that we've done. I talked about it last year, but I wanted to get some of our staff serve safe certified. So Aramark sponsored a class at Upper Sinclair High School over the summer, and we had three district employees that went and are now serve safe certified, so there's somebody in each building that has that certification. Some of the annual trainings that we do, civil rights training, we do every year. We do school lunch meal pattern and nutrition standards, the breakfast meal pattern, nutrition standards. We also have weekly safety topics and daily safety briefs that we're doing. And weekly, I'm going to all the different buildings and doing like safe observation just to make sure that, you know, the area's safe, they're practicing, you know, proper food safety and hygiene. As for recognition, I do want to mention that the junior senior high school staff did receive a perfect score from our Steritech food safety and sanitation audit. Steritech is a third-party auditor and comes in and does an audit once a year, and they got a perfect score, they didn't find any risks, so kudos to them. Next here, we're on, kind of want to show you a little bit about our new participation and our growth. If you look at breakdown, breakfast, lunch, and our meal equivalent, so we're just looking at the breakfast and lunch. As you can see, last year versus this year, 37,900 breakfast this year, last year 32,000, so we're improving in breakfast. Same thing in lunch, 55,991 versus 51,158. So attendance or enrollment has gone up a little bit, but we're still growing. Our participation numbers, percentage has gone up as well. Total, this year versus last year, we're up 11,365 meals year-to-date this year. Go on to community engagements. Just a couple of things that we've worked with in the community. The first thing, this summer, we had the opportunity to work with Mr. Kabistec again. You know, he hands out meals at Crafton and Carnegie Elementary all summer, and we provide those meals to him. So we were able to provide 3,700 lunches this summer. Very grateful for that partnership, so he's a new, thank you very much for that opportunity and everything that you do for the community. The other, a couple of other things we did, Aramark sponsored the Carleton Education Foundation Golf Outing. And then we worked, we've been partnering with the Free Store by providing the means for them to order some of the things that they're giving away in their backpack program. And over the last year, I've watched their backpack program grow from last year, they were giving away 50 to 55 per week, and this year, it's now up to almost 100. So we were trying to think of a way that we could help, so I reached out to Aramark's senior leadership and asked if there was anything we could do. So as of last month, Aramark decided we're gonna start covering the cost of all of the milk donations that we do every week, so again, the work that they do down there for the community is amazing, so I just wanted to, you know, see what we could do to help. I'm very excited to be able to do that, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Some of the catering we've done as well, we did obviously the welcome back staff breakfast, we do that every year. This year, we did the back to school nates, that was the first year for that. I think that was pretty successful. We did, you know, about 300 hamburgers and hot dogs and everything for the community, so that was nice. Look forward to doing that again, hopefully next year. The National Order Society induction ceremony, just last weekend, we provided some catering for the tip-off storm. All right, some key topics and next steps. Some of the things I talked about last year, one of the things were some equipment upgrades. We do have some old equipment. We were able to get at the beginning of this school year for Crafton and Carnegie, we got two new steam table warming units down there. And then we also worked to apply for the Pennsylvania Equipment Grant, and we're looking to try to get a new, it's a rational combi oven, and we're trying to get that for up here at the high school. Some of the changes that we have been able to make, again, we haven't been able to do everything I've wanted, we're still working on the staffing part, but we did expand the elementary menu to offer a second daily entree, so we're doing like a second cold option, so they have a total of four different items that they can choose from at the elementary now, daily, so we're still working. I want to get another hot entree down there as well, but hopefully we can get some staffing and be able to do that. Here at the high school, we've offered another additional entree, and one of the things that we wanted to work on, and I know it's important to everyone, is the fruits and vegetables. So this year, we allocated more of our commodity dollars to fruit and vegetables instead of processed food, so we've been using a lot more of that, and that's been going really well. They've actually been providing us with more local fruits, too, so we had like a whole month of September, October, we had apples that were from Dawson's Orchard, which is just right over the road, which was nice to have as well. Some of the new items, we were able to do buffalo popcorn chicken mac and cheese, the nacho cater tota bowl, and one of the things that works actually well down at the elementary school, it's our biggest day now, is the crispy chicken sandwich with the signature fiver sauce that kids can taste like Chick-fil-A sauce. So that's a good day down there for them.
How'd you steal that?
So on to next steps, things that we were looking to do. Obviously, we want to increase student engagement. I want to be able to do more promotions and taste tests, especially at the elementary level, get those students more involved, and get them excited about food, and try to improve that program. And we want to work with the student government, get feedback from them, and make the changes that we can. As we hired all more people, obviously, we're gonna open up the remaining stations at the junior senior high school, focus on more customizable, made-to-order options, the deli bar is still something everybody wants, and it just takes so many hands to do it, so I'm hoping we get there soon. Also, just some, you know, we want to offer some different options, more options that the students can buy, you know, Hershey's ice cream, different flavored beverages and things like that that meet the smart snacks requirements. This slide just shows, you know, some of the things that we've worked on, like I said, this new menu, updates from Aramark. They've worked to provide, there's 150 different new recipes, there's limited time offerings that have been provided, crafted by Culinary Alliance chefs, and then they're working with all these different companies to develop recipes with, you know, brands and people record, you know, like catalogs, general meals, all those Landalakes, all, that's where all of our products are coming from. You know, we use a lot of Tyson, we use those types of things as well. So coming in the spring, we're looking forward to doing National School Breakfast Week, that's March 4th through 8th, and we plan to have some different activities, giveaways, and new items in all the different buildings for that. And also, we are looking to roll out some different smoothies at the high school, we want to do that for breakfast, have a smoothie bar. It's, you know, something that we've been talking about for a while, I think, you know, by the springtime, I think we'll be able to do that. The students like, we're doing like yogurt marfaize right now, and the students really like those, so I think that, you know, doing the smoothies will be nice as well. I got one more slide. And the last slide, this is just some of the pictures of, at the top left is one of the limited time offerings we did, which is Asian chicken salad. In the center is the, it's chili garlic popcorn chicken lame, which we did on Monday, actually. We did that yesterday, sold quite a bit of those up here at the high school. Then you have our pizza station, where we have three different pizzas every day. We have a white pizza, regular pizza pepperoni. And the bottom right is, that's just our setup from Carnegie for our holiday meal that we had, and district-wide for the holiday meal, we did a total of like 300 pounds of turkey that we roasted and sliced and served. It was a really nice day, so. That's it, that's all I got. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
We've discussed getting some of the refugee stay-at-home moms to come up here, but transportation is a problem. If you have any, any people leave Carnegie, we could get at least a couple of people.
Okay, yeah, and we'll keep that.
Or transportation up here.
Right.
Okay. Plus, my son Nick is a councilperson at Pensbury. Are you interested in getting some Pensbury people? Because it's just across the street.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of that would be district decisions as far as transferring and things like that.
I'll check to see if we can get into the Pensbury.
I would defer to them for that, but yeah, I mean, we're interested in, you know.
They would have no transportation problem.
Right, okay.
Sure.
You're saying existing employees at Pensbury?
No, retirees.
Oh, retired, who live in that area.
Sure, sure. It's just across the road.
Okay. Any other questions? Good information. It's good to see some fresh new anyone, it's a great.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, definitely good-looking entrees. Just from superintendent's report side of things, just again, underscoring the appreciation that we have for our board members, congratulations to those who are recently re-elected, congratulations to Director Luke for joining the board as well. We look forward to his input as we, as we guide the district. Very challenging and exciting times as well. Employment Opportunities was brought up by Mr. Racicot. We do have an employment section that's on our website, can be found under our district Employment Opportunities, and within each of those employment areas, generally vacancies that we have right now are in food service, paraprofessionals, nurse aid, and custodial work, and each of those are outlined on that page along with a link to the applications and the process to submit applications for those who are interested. We also do have substitute teachers, we also have substitute custodians. So like Director Schreiber noted, if there are individuals who would like to work just as part-time, make your own schedule, we can do that, and that would be greatly appreciated. Also, we did put out information this afternoon about our phone system. As you come up onto the campus, one thing you notice is the backhoe. In front of the building, we did have an issue with some water seepage in front of the junior senior high school. Through our investigation up to this point, we believe that it's groundwater that's seeping up. Mr. Peter conducted some water sample tests, even had a guy out with a stethoscope to listen to hear where the water's coming from, just to check to make sure it's not a water main leak, and also just to make sure it's not raw sewage, so we are under the impression right now that it's just water seepage up. Throughout that process, we believe that that had an impact on our phone service, most recently with the fiber optics getting waterlogged, so that's what we believe to be the issue. As soon as we get the water taken out of that area, they'll be able to go through and conduct a little bit more of an investigation to see what the phone issue is. So we did put out information on how to get a hold of the school. It is intermittent, there are times where we're able to place calls, and there are times where we're able to receive them, but there's also times it could be three to six-hour period of times where the phone system is down, so we did put phones in our main office area that are hooked up to our fax machines, which are analog-based, and that does not have an impact on those fiber optics that are running down through that area. So in the event of an emergency, we do have those contact phones set up, they're ready to go, but we do ask you first, try to call the regular numbers just to see if they work first. If you don't experience success there, go through the fax lines we have set up. That concludes the superintendent's report, let's see them. Thank you. We don't have our usual committee reports tonight from the board, but does any board member have committee relays they'd like to bring up before we move on to the rest of the meeting? Okay, good. Moving on to section four, miscellaneous section, I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, additions to the list of conferences for '23 and '24 school year. And number two, we approve the service order agreement and E-rate letter of agency with the AIU for regional wide-area network services and internet access. As seen, the motions for those two items. Second, any questions or discussion? Not the vote, all those in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries. Under section six fines, we have two items on to approve number one, bill from November 21st through December 4th, 2023, in the amount of $69,736.48. And then number two, approve that the board accepts the resolution regarding Act One Index Taxpayer Relief Act, saying that the district will not raise taxes above the index of 6.6% for the '24, '25 school year. I have a motion for those two items.
So moved.
Second.
Moving to second, thank you. Any questions or discussion? Not the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Quick point of reference, that just says that we're not gonna raise the tax level for next year above the index. We haven't finalized our budget yet, that's not due until June, so many months to come, but that's just a statement saying that we think our finances are in good enough shape, we're not gonna go above that, that index, so. Under the next section, section six personnel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the personnel agenda, as was Smith.
So moved.
Moving to second, thank you. Any questions or discussion? Not the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Under section seven, student activities, I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, the additions to the list of field trips for '23, '24 school year. And number two, the creation of the Black Student Union at the Carleton Junior Senior High School as proposed by the high school administration and our student body and their advisor. I have a motion for those two items.
So moved, second.
Moving to second, any questions or discussion? Not the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Congratulations. Any director of any old business they would like to bring up? Any director of any new business they would like to discuss? Any members of public in any open forum they would like to...
Yeah, since he brought this up, I, first of all, I apologize. I normally come here in September, I was actually, my updates that week in September in Harrisburg, so I couldn't make the meeting. October, I worked night court, and then it just slipped my mind in November, I apologize. But first of all, that lunch program is, there's so many people involved in that lunch program, and I want to make sure we, you know, give the proper accolades to the people that are involved, and starts right off the bat with the partnership we have with Dr. Kreider. Dr. Kreider, we couldn't do this without you, you know that, I've told you this to your face, but we appreciate your support. It's, you know, it's one of that, it's that type of relationship that the support is whatever we need, so I thank you for that. The lunches that we got from, you know, Ryan Racicot here were amazing, they saved us a lot of money as opposed to going to the food bank, because the food bank lunches would have cost us at least 75 to a dollar more a lunch, okay? Yeah, and we do the grab and go, so because we do the grab and go, and when kids don't have to eat on-site, that we can't get the lunches for free. Because under the federal guidelines, you're not allowed to do the grab and go and provide free lunches. So this way, we can do the grab and go, we have no questions asked. I also want to mention some of our partners, St. John's Evangelical Lutheran Church with Pastor Sarah and their parishioners, been fantastic, not only support with volunteer hours, but also financially. I also want to thank the Crafton Ingram Rotary, unbelievable with their volunteer hours and their financial support. And then it was the Carnegie Alx, now it's the Allegheny Alx, they give us a nice donation towards the program also. And we also have a couple individuals here who have been instrumental since the beginning, and I know she's not gonna want me to mention her name, but I will, Megan Schreiber, couldn't do it without you, she is fantastic. And Terry Lee, he has been partnering with me on getting those meals to and from the school since the beginning, and I really appreciate your help. There's a lot of people in the community involved in this program, and the success of the program, oh, I also want to thank one more person, Mrs. Campbell for having the Free Store open on the Wednesdays. I want to make sure I do a shout-out, and of course, Mr. Alexander who started that, but Mrs. Campbell was the one here most Wednesdays, making sure the Free Store was open and available. but Mrs. Campbell was the one near most Wednesdays, making sure the Free Store was open and available to any member of the community at the same time the lunches were given out. This past year, we exceeded our numbers, and I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but it's, it's becoming to, to the point now where families are definitely relying on us being, being there and being available. And just to tell you how, how much this program costs with, and so you know how important our partners are to this, it was over fourteen thousand dollars last year that we spent on this program. And that, that includes the three, three days a week for lunches, because we couldn't afford five. We do Monday, Wednesday, and Friday for lunches, and every Friday, we provide weekend bags for any family that needs it. So it's, it's really a community effort, but it starts with the cooperation at the school here and then filters down to everybody else. So thank you, everybody who's involved, I just want to make sure that everybody involved gets the right accolade, so thank you.
Jack, I want to thank you for all that you do for the community and for the school.
No, it's all my...
You're just amazing.
It's, you're welcome.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you for setting me up. Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Jack.
Jack, and I'll say, how, how many years have you been...
This is our, that was our fourth year, and now we're gonna be going, hopefully, you know, if everything works well, we're going into our fifth year next year. I think it's a program now that we, we have to continue for as long as we're able, so.
Can I, can I also add Jim Nagorski to that list?
Yo, please.
Jim Nagorski.
Jim Nagorski with the Carnegie, with the Crafton Ingram Rotary. He is, he's amazing, thank you. Oh, I'm so sorry, thank you. I didn't want to forget him. He's a former teacher here at Most U Nides, most people know Jim Nagorski, he's, he's just an unbelievable individual.
He's almost as famous as Jack Kabistec.
He knows everybody that comes to a lunch.
Plus, he's been very helpful to Ukrainian refugees, probably all the refugees, and sending humanitarian aid to Ukraine. He's a good guy.
He's a good guy, he is a good guy.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, guys, for everything. Thank you for the support.
Any other open forum questions or comments? If not, board members, any open forum questions or comments? Officially, finally, Director Luke, congratulations, thanks for joining us and we'll look forward to serving. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close debate? We are...